Just tell Kevin not to zoom in on me.
And you're wearing a tie.
You know this.
It is, literally, it is a first.
I like it.
All right, I'll call tonight's meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge lute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Student Representative Olson.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
Director Viall.
Here.
Director Ushka.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
And for the last time, Director Miller.
Shannon, for the last time, I'm here.
Thank you. Before I move on, I just want to formally welcome Student Representative Olson to the Board. She's a junior at Stadium High School. She's been in Tacoma Public Schools all of her life, and she's excited to be involved in a different capacity through the school board. She is currently the junior class president and is active in a variety of student clubs and service organizations. We're very pleased to have you here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Item number five, adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption of the agenda for this evening?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community.
Good evening, President Heinz and members of the Board. Safety is one of the strategic goal areas that you established for our district, and one small part of that safe school philosophy involves frequent drills and on a variety of emergency situations such as lockdowns and fire evacuations. And then, sometimes, emergencies occur at the least opportune time and not quite as you always practice it. Last month, Gary Smith was the noontime supervisor on duty watching over students on the playground at Stanley Elementary School during the lunch recess. Tacoma police officers investigating a crime encountered an armed suspect in the Stanley neighborhood, and the suspect rode his bicycle onto the Stanley playfield, dropped the bike, and began running toward the playground area. Gary Smith had to react quickly. He had the students on the playground run back inside the cafeteria while he radioed the main office to put the school in lockdown. As the suspect threw his gun onto the playground and ran away from the school, the police officers eventually captured him. As it turned out, Gary may have been the perfect person to be on duty watching over those kids at the time. He began working at Stanley in August 2014 and has worked in security positions for more than fifteen years and currently serves as Security Director and Night Manager at Cedar Brook Lodge in C-TAC. Smith's, Gary Smith's wife, Patience, is here tonight. She works as a paraeducator in one of Stanley's developmental classrooms. And to honor Gary, I'd like first to introduce the Principal of Stanley Elementary, Cindy Johnson.
Well, no one told me I was talking. Okay, so, get up here. This is Mr. Smith, and it was one of those really rare occurrences. But we were very well-planned for it because it's goal number four. Our ability to get our children off the field, we can do it because we practice every day. We started it about eight years ago. It's called Stop, Look, and it's a whole procedure. So we were able to bring every child back in within about fifteen seconds. Gary is a pro. All I saw in the cafeteria was about fifty children running in saying someone has a gun. And of course, I went military right then. Literally, ah! And then I saw the police car. But Gary, when he was debriefing with me, he said things like, "I was someth-" Well, tell them what you said. It was amazing.
As I watched everything unfold, it was-
My, my.
Go ahead. When I watched everything unfold, it was kind of obvious that there was something serious going down since Tacoma PD decided to drive onto the playground. At that point, it was get the kids out of the way. I'm not sure what's going on. As the subject started to run towards the children, it was making sure that I was between him and the children as they were getting inside. So luckily, we got some great officers there in Tacoma PD. They took the subject down and arrested him without any incident to the children. So, very fortunate, we had some good officers out there.
Well, in his report, he was like, "I'm fifteen feet. I did this. I did this." All I knew is I had to get him in the building and lock the doors. So, Mr. Smith, he also has-
Where's Philip?
He also has a son, Philip, at our school too. So we have the whole Smith family. We're kind of a little family school. Is that enough?
Okay.
Mr. Smith, would you please come up? For achievement of excellence in procurement award.
Thank you, President Heinz and members of the Board. Do you have a song that you like to listen to over and over again without ever getting tired of it? We have a repeat honoree tonight. For the sixth year in a row, our purchasing department has won the achievement of excellence in procurement award from the National Procurement Institute. And I'm sure you'll agree that developing best practices in buying goods and services to save Tacoma Public Schools' huge amounts of money each year never gets old. Tacoma Public Schools is one of the, of only two agencies in Washington and one of twenty-five school districts in the United States and Canada to receive this award this year. And here to accept the award is the Contracts Purchasing and Warehouse Director, Mr. Steve Demel.
It's a great place to work, and we have great people, and it's, it's fun to earn awards, but it's more fun to save money for the schools and the students that need every penny they can get. Thanks.
Steve, would you please come up? I would just add for context, we're the only district in the state of Washington. There's two-hundred-and-ninety-five school districts in the state of Washington, and I believe I recently heard there are about fourteen thousand school districts in the United States. So to be one of twenty-five is quite an honor. So thank you, Steve, for your leadership. It's much appreciated. And we'll move on to item number six point three, recognition of the Gold Star Community Partnership Award.
Good morning, or good evening, directors. It's been a long day. It's a long day. It's that time again, we're going to be recognizing, recognizing some community Gold Star partners. And for this first one, I'm going to give you context, as I always do. We at Tacoma Public Schools define partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school district, and the greater Tacoma community. We know that partners are committed to supporting academic success and the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality, quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to supporting student success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, resources for TPS students, family, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to community partners who have made a difference by doing what is best for kids. So for tonight, we have our September award is going to the City of Tacoma and their Planning and Development Services. And this was so special to planning and construction that they wanted to present this award themselves. So I'm going to have somebody come up.
Good evening. I wanted to put some context to this award because since I've come on board in March, the City of Tacoma has been an unbelievable partner for Tacoma Schools. And so some context I thought would be in order. The organization, we want to award the Gold Star Community Partner, is the Planning and Development Services for the Department of the City of Tacoma. P and D S is comprised of three primary groups: building, land use, and site development. The director is Peter Huffman. The designated client, steward liaison to the district, is Dave Johnson. Large-scale design and construction projects are difficult and are consistently comprised of challenges, surprises, and delays. Some caused by weather, material, labor issues, availability of resources and services. Acquiring the necessary permits to start a construction project and obtaining permission to occupy a building once it has been built are two instances in every construction project intensely critical and complicated. They're referred to in the development schedule as the red zone, quote unquote. Every permit to start a project, inspection and approval needed to occupy a project all come through the City of Tacoma P and D S Department. Developing one project at a ti- at a time is difficult. Developing three, two of which are historic modernizations and additions, and one that remains occupied during construction, is extremely difficult and challenging. Partnering, creative thinking, flexibility, quick response times, daily coordination, and standing, weekly planning meetings are needed to manage a development in order to start work when school ends and open by the start of the year. The City of Tacoma P and D S team, working collaboratively with the district, have created a partnership that is accomplishing some amazing results for our community. On a personal note, if you think of projects this summer like Stewart, like McCarver, Sammy Camp Six, Wilson, these are amazing projects that are going on. And, and I can tell you that the City of Tacoma has bent over backwards to help us through the process and make it as efficient and expedited as possible. So, I'd like to invite Dave Johnson to come up. Dave, do you have a few words?
I have a real long speech now. But we did take some time, and we thought it important to convey what this means to us. So, good evening. My name is David Johnson, and with me is Patty Costa. She's really the air traffic control for our department in terms of commercial projects coming in. And we represent Planning and Development Services with the City of Tacoma, as Rob said. And with us is a small group from more than about a hundred people that are part of development and facilitating development in the city. We are proud to be, to represent a department that for over a century has focused on a built environment that is safe and welcoming for all Tacomens. And Patty and I are standing here because, well, let's just say that we won the coin toss, so we're here. But however it came to be, it's meaningful for Patty and me to be entrusted to speak on behalf of everyone that, that came with us and who's not here. So, on everyone's behalf, wow, based on what Rob said, and we thank you for that. That's what we all said in our group, in our own ways, when we heard about this award. We spent time talking about it. And to sum up, we are proud of all Tacomens this evening because of what this award means to us, really what it says about all of you and your team, and because of what it means for our community of students, teachers, families, and taxpayers. We understand it's unusual for a noneducational group to be recognized for this award. We are honored to be included and welcomed into your family of partners. A little trivia. So if all Tacomens, all two-hundred-thousand of us, stood or sat shoulder to shoulder, and I'm talking tight, within about five square feet of each other, remember, we're, we're technical folks, everyone would fit inside the schools and grounds that were permitted for construction in the last two years.
Wow.
Do the math. I did it. That would include all of you and, as well as our staff and some of whom are here tonight. So I'd like to do some introductions here, if you could stand and at least be recognized so that we know who you are. We have Dan Reed from Power, Frank Singletary from Water, Marcy Hedman from Power. And I didn't see anybody else show up from there. You know, we have kids' families tutoring, which I'm going to after this and everything else, and of course Patty. So not everyone is here tonight. So this award acknowledges our entire department and all of our partners, in particular Tacoma Public Utilities and Pierce County Health Department. Without their support, we wouldn't be here. As I mentioned, we spent some time talking about what the award means to us and others. And Patty is, is going to tell a little bit about what this first means.
I'm short. Some of us up here can relate. What this means to us. It means that our hard work over the past two years is being noticed. Our work continues to be focused on customer service. It's a first public acknowledgement of success of us as a new department under the leadership of our director, Peter Huffman, and a step towards becoming, in his words, peerless. It is the first time that we can remember that our department has been recognized in such a significant way by a customer for our primary role as facilitator. Usually, there's food involved. In our terms, this award means less drama, doers being direct, the messiness of creating, defining moments when all does not go well, and we still get there. No blame, problem-solving, solutions, working late, starting early, meeting on short notice, meeting on site, fixing mistakes, listening, doing steps out of order when necessary, taxpayer value, a great future. It's our belief that a successful partnership, first and foremost, relies on effective communication. That happens when there's a commitment to building together towards a shared goal. Since this recognition is for being a great partner and great communication is what partners do, it means that both the district and the city are communicating effectively. So this award also says much about your team. As public servants, we choose to be here. We have shared values and interests. We have an interest in the future, a brighter future. So in that sense, this award recognizes a partnership focused on the future, on that fut- and that future is what's doing best for the kids. We value you and our educational system. Thank you for noticing our work and our commitment to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty. This award is, is evidence that we share common values of being welcoming for all, working together, of getting better, and of building for, for the future. These values are held closely by our first Tacomens and extend through all of us here tonight. On, one last note in closing. Our department has had the privilege of working with students in the summer two-five-three, Summer Jobs two-five-three program. And over, over the past two years, we are impressed by the work that they can do. It's a testament to the good work that you do. We're proud to be considered a partner in their future, and we, I mean collectively, are proud of building Tacoma. We're living well in a spectacular natural setting, is what Tacomens do. Thank you very much.
David and Patty, would you please come up?
Can I get all the staff that's present to come on up and do the walk-around and shake hands, please? So that was awesome. We have one more to give, but I just want to say thank you for your work, your good work, and also your kind words. It's not so very often that I meet people that speak my love language. That was partnership. So I'm so excited. That was beautiful. Okay, so next we have our October recipient, and that is going to be the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound. Give you a little background on this one. The Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound is serving on an average sixteen-hundred young people every day in eleven branches, three outreach sites in Pierce, Mason, and Kitsap County. Services are provided to around sixteen-thousand youth each year, providing over one-point-four million dollars in program scholarships that ensures that those kids that can't have, that don't have the ability to pay can still participate in life-changing programs in the clubs. The Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound strive to create a safe and positive place for young people to develop life skills, gain academic support, to participate in health and fitness activities, and provide opportunities that allow you to reach their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. During the summer months, the Boys and Girls Club offer a ten-week summer camp program to help prevent the summer learning gap among students. All clubs offer a variety of programs that have an academic focus. This past summer, the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound supported Tacoma Public Schools students' summer school priorities for acceleration and enrichment by partnering for third and fourth graders struggling with reading based on their S-VAC scores. They had a summer reading camp. Transportation was provided as well as breakfast and lunch. The camp included two hours of instructional time from TPS-certified teachers, integrated literacy, dance, and music. This partnership yielded significant results. Seventy-nine percent of the program participants gained one month or more in reading skills, and twenty-two percent gained two or more months. There was no summer slide for these participants. And the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound and TPS are working together to expand the program for even more students next summer. On, we want to, the partnership office wants to recommend that the Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound be awarded the Gold Community Partner Award for the month of October. And here to accept that award, we have their CEO, Carrie Holden, and she has two board members with her, Mr. Zeminek and Mr. Stewart. I'm going to ask them to come up.
Good evening. And for the record, I did not quite get a promotion. Mark Starnes is still our CEO. I want to make sure that if he's watching this on TV, I'm worried. I am the COO of Boys and Girls Club of South Puget Sound, and we are so incredibly humbled and honored to receive this recognition this evening. Collaboration is the heart and soul of our organization, and we are very honored to have the longest-standing Boys and Girls Clubs and operations in the state, and that started here in Tacoma. And that means that we have been working for and with Tacoma School District students and the school district itself for over seventy-five years now. And again, that's the first one in the state. We beat out King County and Seattle even. So we're pretty excited about that. Lots of great things are happening in Tacoma, and they have been for a very long time. The summer boost program was amazing for not only students but also for our staff. We were able to really support kids as they worked with the wonderful teachers and staff of Tacoma Public Schools. The academic piece is really in credit to the teachers. What we try and do in the Boys and Girls Club is provide all of those wraparound pieces that help kids gain social emotional skills. We want them to come into the classroom ready to be top-notch students, have that homework done, be ready to be great citizens in the classroom, and wonderful leaders. We work with them, again, with the Whole Child Initiative that the district is adopting. We want them to be responsible, respectful, and safe. We want them to have all of those things that they need to be the excellent students that they are. This evening, I brought with me two individuals who support our organization and in turn, the students that we serve in your district. Darren Zeminek is our incoming board chair, and Willie Stewart, who needs no introduction in this room, but is our longest-standing board member. I don't know if either of them would like to say anything. I know Willie oftentimes has something brief to say.
Mr. Zeminek was one of the great students at Lincoln High School when I was a principal. So that simply means that I'm old. And I'll make it to the twenty-fifth of December, I will celebrate my eightieth birthday. I've been a part of the Tacoma Boys and Girls Club since nineteen-seventy-one, and our focus has always been on improving the quality of life for all our young people. And I'm so grateful for the new leadership of Tacoma School District and the leadership of the Boys and Girls Club to have this partnership. I cannot describe it, but I would invite you to come visit any one of the sites, and that would be the best story. So on behalf of our Boys and Girls Club, thank you, thank you. And Mr. Zeminek, since you finished Lincoln and you are a student, you have to prove that you're a good student.
Well, let's start by saying I was a math person. So, I can't recall who my English teacher was, but I know my math teacher still. I would just like to say thank you. I've been with the Boys and Girls Club since two thousand and four. I'm aware of our partnerships and the things that we collaborate on. We really appreciate working with the superintendent, the school district, and the board, and appreciate the opportunity to help kids. That's what we're here for, and I know that's what you're doing. And the summer boost program that we've been running for two years now is widely successful, and we look to build on it. So, thank you.
We'll move on to item six point five, recognition of Tacoma School Board Member Kurt Miller. Superintendent.
So Director Miller, it is my privilege, and my, oh, you didn't know I was here, okay. It is my privilege to have the opportunity to recognize Director Miller for twelve years of service to Tacoma Public Schools. There's absolutely no way we could have the words or awards or anything to thank you for the contributions that you've made, but we like to give you a token of our appreciation today. Kurt Miller served the, excuse me, served the children of Tacoma in a variety of roles, not just only as a school board member. In the early nineteen-nineties, he worked as a site supervisor for after-school and evening programs at Meeker Middle School as part of the City of Tacoma and the Tacoma Public Schools/Community Schools Partnership Program. When he first decided to run for the board, he, he was appointed to the board in two thousand and three to finish the term of Kathy Orlando. And then he won reelection overwhelmingly in November of two thousand and nine. And in two thousand and thirteen November, he won an uncontested race to retain the school board seat. And in addition to his dedicated service on the school board, he founded and led the REACH program to help struggling youth and young adults in the community get connected with employment, education, and other support services that change their lives for the better. He has always supported our homeless youth, our disenfranchised youth, anyone that needed help. Kurt Miller was there for him. And he was always saying, "Carla, what, what are you doing with those Mckenty Vento kids?" Making sure that we support- Making sure that we support them, we appreciate that. Most recently Kurt has further dedicated himself to the cause of helping the homeless youth have a healthy, safe place to stay and receive assistance to get them stabilized and off the streets. I met Kurt in 2009 when I first came to Tacoma and I had the pleasure of serving with him and then in 2012, I became the superintendent. And I remember, as on a personal note, that Kurt came over to me, I don't know if he remembers this, and he said, Carla, now that you're the superintendent, there's one thing that you're really going to have to make sure you take care of right away. And of course I thought to myself, oh crap, what's this going to be? So first I thought, oh no, if he says I have to, I was afraid that he was going to say I had to be skinny. That wasn't going to happen. Second is I would have to be a socialite and that's not in my nature, but I'd have to wear a suit every day. That would be difficult. But he said one thing. He said, Carla, I expect you to get out there and love our community. And that put him in my heart forever because that's what I like to do and that was something I wouldn't have to work to do. So Kurt has brought a father's compassion and a spirit of community involvement during some of our most difficult times in recent school district history. He's served four superintendents and had to hold the district together during tumultuous leadership changes. He was the Board President during part of the difficult economic times during a strike and like many school districts, has had to really help us face deep budget cuts, school closures. He brought thoughtful, calming leadership presence that helped Tacoma Public Schools retain the support of the community. I've always been so appreciative of the fact Kurt, that you told it the way it was, the way you thought and what you, what was the truth to you and that will always be appreciated. His support has translated into record voter support for multiple operating levies, a technology levy, historic capital construction bond. He has been a part of building a successful strategic plan that has led to a laser-focused investment in academic improvements and innovation. The results are clear. In 2007, all Tacoma's comprehensive high schools were labeled rightly or wrongly as dropout factories. Today Kurt Miller is leaving the school board on a high note with graduation rates at an all-time high and increases in every racial group. On behalf of the staff of Tacoma Public Schools and the people of Tacoma, thank you Kurt for dedicated service to the children of Tacoma. You come and get your plaque. Now we have, you stay here, and we have a song to dedicate to your years of service. Totally composed for you.
Kevin, did you want us up there? Where do you want it? Go with it. We'll be sharing the words with you all and if you all, any Beatle fans here? All right, so we all know the song Imagine, so feel free if you want to come and vocalize, do a duet, bring it. Amanda? Oh, I do need the clicker so I can share the words. Although I did comment to Kurt that a couple of the pieces are going to be a little tough here because, oh, well, we don't have the PowerPoint side of it. All right, we'll just go with that. All right, we'll go with the PowerPoint. Can we get the slide? Slide show, please. Thank you. Maestro, un poquito de música por esto, por favor, si me hace, está bien, ¿verdad? Imagine no Kurt Miller. It makes me want to cry. No wear a finer mustache. Great sweaters with no tie. Imagine no Kurt Miller. It's hard to say goodbye. Imagine no Kurt Miller. It's pretty hard to do. You've been here like forever. It feels like since 82. Imagine no Kurt Miller. It's hard to say adieu. Come on, people. Ooh-hoo. He won't have to stop school closures. Or read all those construction bids. Hear complaints about school boundaries and why they're all wrong. More time with his own kids. Imagine no Kurt Miller. It makes us feel so sad. He's helped so many families. Has helped so many grads. Imagine all the people he's lifted on their way. Join me. He'll be biking more than ever. Come on, people. In his kayak he will roam. Imagine this next school board meeting. We'll be here and he'll be home. You can have the words for you.
So I would just like to take a few minutes, and I shared this earlier, is I don't know how to thank everybody I've served with and that I've served. To be able to have your community say, please, work with us by voting for you, unless you're an elected official and you run for election, people care enough to vote for you, it's a concept that's still a little strange to me. And be able to say twice that happened is absolutely amazing. Carla talked about some of the ups and downs of being on the school board and there are huge ups and downs. And I think there's a few that just really hit it for me and Carla covered it, but a lot of them, but you know, when you're able to deal with multi-million dollar deficits, when you have to close schools, when you have to have a teacher strike, when your superintendent resigns and you have a forum with 1,000 people at Foss High School about closing their school and you're a part of that, that all happened in one year? When I was Board President?
2011.
One of those things could tear a school board and a district apart, but the Board I was on stayed together. Catherine and Debbie were there at that time. And to be able to share that with them. And the most incredible thing is 15 years ago, if you would have told me I was going to be standing here after 12 and a half years saying thank you, I'd say you're crazy. Number one, who would want to run for school board? And me, you know, me. And just to be a part of this has been absolutely amazing. This has been the most incredible journey in my life, other than being a father and a husband. There's a few people I like to say thank you to that are, that are an integral part of my life that most people don't see and that's my wife and my children. My children have exceeded all of my expectations in their lives. My son is working as a doctor at the University of Minnesota. My daughter's working on her master's degree after spending three years in the Peace Corps in Cameroon. To have two children like that is just amazing to me. Once again, they're my children. Why me? I mean, what happened? But most important, my wife. You know, she's the woman that has put up with me for almost 36 years. I've done some crazy things and she's been there right with me. She's been there to listen when I needed an ear. She's also been the one to say, quit your whining and get to work, which I've needed at times. So without my family, I would be a totally different person. When it comes to the school board and the school district, thank you. I've served with some amazing people. Willie, is he still here? Willie's one of them. He's the man. You take a lot of votes over the years. I was just kind of figuring out quickly, I've been to over 300 meetings, board meetings, study sessions and retreats in my time on the Board and I hate to count how many votes there have been. There's one vote that counts most to me than any other vote I've had to make and all that. I've had to close schools, I've had to vote on $24 million deficit budgets, I've had to make some pretty tough votes. There's one vote that has really made me proud and that's when I voted for Carlos Antono. Carla called it. The district's at the top, if they can go higher yet, I get the leave at the top. So thank you very much.
All right, any comments?
I'd like to make some comments.
Director Ashka.
I don't know how to follow up on that, but I can't let you pass without me saying something, right?
Yeah, it's you.
That is me, that is me. It was me complaining about something with highly capable as a citizen when I first interacted with Kurt and he very patiently walked me through all the finances of school districts so that I would understand what was going on and figure out how I could participate as a citizen to change it. Move up a couple of years to suddenly I'm the treasurer on the school campaign back when there was 12 to 15 of us that would get together every time there was a levy to try and pass the levy. We can't even imagine that now, you know? And then I got to Vice Chair in that critical year that you talked about. So we've had some good times together and we've worked hard to see where we're going now. To me, you've been a friend and a mentor and an excellent peer on this Board and I can't imagine no Kurt Miller, so you'll be missed.
So I go all the way back, 12 and a half years. And you always had the ability to choose the right time to be President. I mean, every time, I couldn't believe the things you had to deal with as President. It was pretty amazing.
I'm not sure what that says.
No, it didn't say anything about it, but you did a great job of bringing us through all the bad times and that we needed to be brought through and you will be missed and thank you for all the work that you've done. And you know, I think that nobody really mentioned that all the campaigns you worked on even before you were on the Board to pass the levy, so that was your beginning with the school district. And then Bryant School, he worked at Bryant also, so you didn't mention that. Yeah, so, and he helped them with their first Missouri grant.
That's right.
Yeah, so, thank you very much.
I've been in this political game, I think, longer than you have Kurt, so I know what it's like and I know in a way you will find tomorrow it's bittersweet. The first Thursday that you're not here, you will miss it, but I also want to thank you for your longtime commitment to our kids in this community and for your service on this Board and I know that it's, some days are fun and some days aren't. We talked about that and yeah, you know, we all get through it because of the leadership that you helped during your 12 years on this Board. So thank you for setting a good foundation for the rest of us to continue with.
Thank you, Karen.
I appreciate, as I've gotten to know Kurt over the years, your sense of humor and I think that's probably how you were able to handle some of those really challenging situations, is to keep things in perspective, always do the right thing, keep the kids in mind. A lot of things that I've learned from you in my four years and I appreciate that mentorship and it's nice to see you in a tie.
We both got the memo about the beer.
Yes, this is my Kurt Miller tribute beer. But I know that while you're leaving the Board, you're still going to be deeply committed to kids and families in Tacoma and Pierce County and it's a noble pursuit. The homeless problem is something that continues to plague our community and I feel better knowing that you're going to be out there leading the fight to help those kids and families. And 12 years, 12 years is a long time to serve in any capacity, let alone on a school board and you've done it well, so thank you for your service to the community, it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Is Miguel going to do an encore? Can we move on, Miguel? We'll move on to item number seven, members of the public wishing to address the Board. Do we have anybody this evening?
Yes, first is Sally Perkins and second is Cecil Stancliff.
School Board members, encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period is ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments. At the one-minute mark, you'll hear a ding. At the zero-minute mark, you'll hear a second ding. Please begin.
Could not resist coming tonight to thank Kurt for his service. When I filled out my card, I said Kurt was the subject, but it says for or against and I wasn't sure.
Better be for, Sally, we don't need to wait too long.
I'm against the tie. So I was here the night you were sworn in and I remember that when Superintendent Schumake spirited you off to be indoctrinated, but you were here to be sworn in, I was there that night. We worked together at Trinity around the after-school program and when you ran the 21st Century Grant at NLF and then launching of Reach, I was working with you on that as well. And now this new chapter in your life where you'll be helping students who are facing homelessness or unstable housing, which is just great. Everything you've done in your career has been about education and youth development and as you look back over the things you've done and look ahead to the things you're going to do, I hope you feel really, really proud for that investment. So I want to thank you for your service at a time when the Board has made some really, really important decisions and investments in the future of Tacoma's kids. But I do have to say just a couple words about my favorite Kurt meeting. My favorite Kurt meeting was the 1,000-person meeting at Foss. And I remember I got there about 5:10, which is way too late, and signed up to testify. I think I ended up testifying about 8:20. But what I remember about that meeting was the way you conducted it. Your combination of firmness and good humor turned what could have been a really, really difficult situation into a passionate affirmation of the Foss community. And I honor you for that because it was a time when leadership in that meeting made all the difference and having sat through the whole four hours, you just did a great job. And to me, that's just a little symbol of how you approached your work on the Board. So, well done Kurt, thank you and I'm looking forward to seeing what you work on next.
Thank you Sally. And just real quick, that Foss meeting was an incredible highlight of my life and I hope Debbie's and Catherine's. When you have 1,000 people there for one reason and one reason alone, to save their school, it was absolutely amazing and the respectfulness. It was a weird thing, I was doing my day job today, I was at this building we were looking at, I was introduced to somebody and he goes, Kurt Miller from the school board? I go, yeah. I was at the school board a few times during the Foss thing and he had children at Foss and we talked about that and he used the word "respectfulness" for the Board. And the respect that was shown from everybody that night is just, will stay with me forever.
Hello Kurt, I'm Eve Bowen and it's just been such a pleasure working with you as a vibrant school steering committee and I retired from Tacoma Public Schools about eight years ago after teaching for 35 years. Let me tell you, you're not going to stop. You're going to stay. You're going to stay, perhaps not in that position, but you're going to continue to support kids, the same as you've been doing. So I'm sure I'll see you around.
Once again, Vibrant Schools wants to thank you, and I personally, Lisa, want to thank you too, for all that you've done for our students, our community, and our staff here at Tacoma Public Schools. You have shown great service over the twelve years and before that, and we want to invite you to be part of a community group called Vibrant Schools now. No conflict of interest. And I just want to say that not only are you a great school board member, but you're a great man, and you've shown us what success is. And I'm going to read a quick quote. "Success is to laugh often," noting your humor, "and much, to win the respect of intelligent people and the affection of children, to earn the appreciation of honest critics, and endure the betrayal of false friends, to appreciate beauty, to leave the world a bit brighter, whether by a healthy child, a garden patch, or a redeemed social condition. To know even one life is breathed easier because you have lived, that this is to have succeeded." Thank you so much for allowing us to share in your success.
Thank you.
Yay. We have a token of our appreciation here.
Thank you very much.
Just a few comments, Kurt, about your past and your future, because they're both exciting and they both mark challenges. I was at the Broadway Center for many years as the education director, and I learned about your deep caring and your efforts to connect with different organizations to make sure that kids had options and professional options. And I was very impressed with your compassion and your heart. And your work on the board has always been a balance. There's a deep fairness inside of you that I really deeply respect. I was at the event at the Washington History Museum the other night where we were talking about the new youth shelter, which is such an essential and has been a missing part of Tacoma, and the fact that it's going to be under your stewardship marks that well. It's such a necessity, and so there's many challenges ahead, but your next endeavor is equally important. So we will be supporting you, and I will personally be supporting you in that effort to create a safe place for teenagers who are experiencing homelessness. So thank you for all of your past, your present, and your future work.
Thank you.
I will move on to item number eight, superintendent's report.
So I wanted to start with just making sure that you, that members of the audience had a chance to look at the, we call it our inclusive gallery. So on September seventeenth, in conjunction with the Pierce County Developmental Disabilities Resource Fair, which was held at Mount DeHoma High School, was an incredible opportunity to really display all the art of our students. There were so many parents there. I was so impressed with this fair that our special services department put together. And so I hope that you will take a chance, I mean, will take the time to take a look at some of the arts. This is a precursor to our Inclusive Schools Week, which is December seventh to eleventh. And we had a hundred and forty pieces of art submitted, three hundred and sixty-two students who contributed to the art, and eighteen of our buildings represented. You'll also see that art represents how students perceive inclusion. There's powerful poetry included in this display. Got to look at that, Luke. Make sure, see if there's any budding poets out there. And then we really want to thank Student Services for sponsoring this event. It was awesome, and I was so happy to see that you'd taken the time to do that. The second thing I'd like to introduce is the Tacoma Public Utilities and McKinstry. Those two entities have something to present to the board tonight. Thank you so much for coming and waiting for the recognition. We appreciate you so much.
Carla, if I could.
Uh-huh, sorry.
Just a quick introduction.
Go ahead.
So in 2014, Tacoma Public Schools was awarded a $450,000 grant from OSPI for energy, sustainable energy-related projects. And in leveraging our partnerships with Tacoma Public Utilities and McKinstry, we've extended those dollars even further. And so we have with us tonight Chris Robinson, superintendent and COO of Tacoma Public Utilities. We have Dave Rolsham, account executive, and we have Peter Meyer, the commercial industrial conservation manager. And from McKinstry, we have their K-12 market manager, Melissa Pendleton. So I think Chris is going to speak first.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. It is a pleasure, actually. It's my great pleasure, on behalf of Tacoma Power, to present this very big check for $268,474 to the Tacoma Public School Board of Directors for energy conservation projects that we completed in partnership over the last couple of years. We have a longstanding, strong partnership with the district's planning and construction team, and this check represents a lot of hard work from many key staff members and contractors, including McKinstry. It's been a great working relationship between our organization to help make the school buildings more energy-efficient, thus reduce operating costs and free up funds for other things like student education. Amongst other things, some of the projects that were done was they eliminated the old inefficient T-12 fluorescent lamps district-wide, and they installed new, energy-efficient, low-wattage T-8 lamps, which I believe are, you see right overhead here. The new efficient lighting has improved the learning environment in classrooms. It not only saves money, but through efficiency, but it's actually better light, so it improves the learning environment. In the future, we look forward to working closely with the district on future conservation projects. We are going to continue to offer generous financial incentives for qualifying projects, so hopefully we can do more projects together. The projects that this check is for represents thirty-two different projects in fourteen elementary schools, two middle schools, six high schools, and four administrative and support sites. I won't name them all because it'll take too long, but it was quite a few buildings. And it represents energy savings of 1.5 million kilowatt-hours per year, which is a lot. That's an annual bill reduction for the district of about $75,000. So I just want to congratulate the district on doing these projects and encourage you to look for future opportunities with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have an official check holder. I'm going to hold my own check. Okay. So as Steve said, I'm Melissa Pendleton with McKinstry. And last year, McKinstry partnered with Tacoma Public Schools planning construction to complete an energy project. And as Chris mentioned, there were a multitude of things that went into that project, but we were able to obtain a $450,000 grant from the state to do the project. The project will save the district $96,000 in energy a year. And Tacoma Power is a wonderful partner. Part of this rebate was for our projects. We really appreciate them. And we modeled the project and found that they are eligible for a federal grant for sustainable design. So we would like to pass that in the amount of $100,648 to Tacoma Public Schools.
If you'd please come up. You can leave those checks right there.
That's awesome.
Yeah, you put it right here.
That's perfect. You guys can do that. It's amazing.
Well, we have a picture. We're going to come out now.
Yeah, we're going to have a picture.
It'd be better to do it from behind.
Get our chairs out of the way here.
We do.
How many board members does it take?
Too many.
Short people in the front.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I wondered if you were relating to the chess.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I was at McKinstry this morning, tour Tacoma's. Rosalyn, would you like those checks?
Prefer something a little easier to deposit. I'll take them.
So Rosalyn actually represents our last superintendent's report. The board has talked about really trying to look at efficiency with our buses, and I think she has an exciting update. Thank you, Rosalyn.
This is a hard night to follow up on, so I'm just going to start off by saying, "Imagine there's no propane." There we go. Oh, thank you. I'm here every night.
Miguel, shorten up your act.
So the presentation that I'm going to bring to you tonight is really a representation of the hard work that's been done by Sue Race, our director of transportation, and Steve Demel, our purchasing director. The two of them have been working diligently to bring us this research, and I'll be presenting it to you tonight. And they're here in the audience in case there's any follow-up questions that I'm unable to get to. We have heard the comments from the board asking us to evaluate alternative energy sources for our buses, and we did look at four different energy options. One would be diesel, propane, compressed natural gas, and electric. Diesel, of course, is what our current fleet is made up of, and propane is an option for the district. It was not an option in previous state contracts. We had one option for a propane bus in prior years on the state contract, and this year we actually have multiple options for propane buses on the state contract. Compressed natural gas was not available on the state contract until this year. There's currently one bus on the state contract that is offered. And electric is not an option in the current state contract, which would mean that we would have to go out and do an RFP, a request for proposal, and develop all of our specifications by the state standards. It also costs a minimum of $250,000 for an electric bus, which is twice the cost of a propane or diesel bus. And so we did not explore the electric option any further in this year's analysis. I went one too far. So in eliminating the electric option, we really looked at the three components. We have diesel, compressed natural gas, CNG, and propane. And just did a quick evaluation of the different components of each fuel. Propane and compressed natural gas offer a very clean burning energy source for us. Diesel, actually, all three are safe to operate. There are buses that currently operate under all three energy options now. The propane and diesel have much greater refueling options for us as a school district. But propane and compressed natural gas have a reduction to noise pollution. They run much quieter, and the buses and the bus rides are much quieter. The infrastructure associated with propane would be between $55,000 and $100,000, depending on the size of the propane tank. A compressed natural gas would be, infrastructure would cost between $200,000 and $500,000 because you need to have a compressor as well as the tanks. And diesel would be no additional cost because that's what we're currently offering. However, we would likely see a reduction in costs because we wouldn't have to go to a station to refill as we currently do. The additional cost of a bus over diesel, $12,000 for propane, $45,000 for CNG, and then the fuel costs are listed there. Under propane, we have listed two different prices. The 78 cents per gallon is based on the current state contract. The 97 cents is the current state contract plus a per-gallon infrastructure cost. So we would have the option, instead of putting the infrastructure in place and paying it upfront, we could build that cost into a per-gallon fuel cost over the period with which we paid back the cost of the infrastructure. So with that, we really focused on propane as an option. We did a cost analysis and determined that propane looks to be our best option and wanted to investigate that further. We looked at some of the advantages of propane. It is a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, reduced idle time and warm-up time. A diesel bus currently needs a good fifteen minutes to warm up, which a propane bus would not, so we would gain fifteen minutes per day of every bus that we have on the lot. Reduce noise pollution for our community and for our students. We have a return on investment anywhere between four and six years, depending on the size of our fleet. The larger the fleet that we offer, the more the infrastructure costs would be spread over the fleet, and we would have a reduction in the return on investment. The propane buses are similar in operation to gas or diesel buses, so we don't lose any efficiency or operational range. They have similar range to a diesel engine. And the buses can be purchased, and the propane can be purchased, under the state contract. So there are certainly options for us this year that weren't there in previous years. I think that it's important to note that diesel buses are one of the most popular alternative fuels. There's currently over 7,000 school buses in 44 states, and over 15 million vehicles worldwide use propane. So this is not a new or innovative technology for us, it's just different for us. Propane safety was a factor in our analysis. We wanted to make sure that the students would be safe in these buses. And the fuel tanks are actually more puncture-resistant than gasoline, and they have low flammability, lowest of any alternative fuel. Leaks are easy to detect due to the odor. Tanks are equipped to prevent overfilling on the bus. We wouldn't have contamination of water or soil if there were some sort of leak to a tank because it dissipates into the air, and it has a very high ignition temperature. Some of the disadvantages, which we're really not even sure we could call disadvantages, but they're, you know, caveats and things that we need to be aware of. There would need to be additional training for our mechanics, although no special tools would be needed to maintain the buses. And actually, the two vendors that offer buses, propane buses on the state contract, offered to provide us with free training for our mechanics. We would require infrastructure that would need to be added to the transportation site. We have three fueling options, three infrastructure options. One would be to not put a tank in at all. We could have service provided where they fill up the buses on a daily basis. We could have a tank installed where we pay upfront, and we could have a tank installed where we pay over the cost of the gasoline, or over the cost of the gallon, excuse me. And then the other caveat is it's just that the bus costs more initially. We did a kind of a lifetime look at the bus differential. We did a number of different analyses on the cost, and this isn't meant to be representative necessarily of the exact cost. It's more of a, let's keep it above the weeds. But this is representative of the types of savings that we would see. As I mentioned, the cost of the bus is about $12,000 more than our current bus options would be, but we would save in maintenance about four cents per mile driven. And we would also have a lower cost per gallon because propane is much more cost-effective fuel. And we would have lower miles per gallon in a propane bus than we would with diesel. However, the cost of propane makes up for that, and the life of a bus of thirteen years, that's the annual depreciation, or the state depreciation on a bus is thirteen years. Over the thirteen years, we would save about $14,000 to $15,000 per bus that we purchase So on December 10th, we'll bring back to you a recommendation to purchase nine propane buses, and with your approval of that, we would work to, Kurt won't be there to help us, but we'll have infrastructure that we're working to put in place, and then we would develop some cost-tracking methods just to make sure that we are seeing the savings that we have expected. Beyond that, we would want to do an evaluation annually of what would be the most cost-effective fuel at that point in time. Perhaps it's not always going to be propane. We don't have to necessarily lock ourselves into one particular opportunity, and we'll have to look at that annually. And then we would work with our contractor, Durham, to see what kind of alternative fuel opportunities they could work into their contract when it's time to renew. With that, I would entertain any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I do.
Vice President, y'all?
Thank you for bringing this forward. And when I was in Phoenix for the Cube meeting, I was approached by Bluebird. Are they one of the providers under the state? And are they?
There's two providers.
Could you tell me who they are, please?
Bryson Sales sells a Bluebird, and Harlow sells its PSE, and they're a new engine, but they look really good.
Okay.
So we have two competitors now, which is great.
Good. Well, they were talking about, obviously, looking for work, but I really quizzed them on the propane versus the other, and this squares with exactly what, you know, what you're saying. The interesting thing that they told me, we look at the beyond, is I said, "Well, you know, we own several of our own buses, particularly for our special-needs kids, but we work with, you know, we have Durham on contract." And they said Durham had been one of the bus companies that they had been working with on conversion of their buses. So they said, you know, "The fact that you have a private provider doesn't preclude you from eventually moving forward," because they are, you know, very anxious to convert... you from eventually moving forward," because they are, you know, very anxious to convert their buses also to a cheaper fuel and less work. So I just wanna say thank you, because you obviously heard us up here. Director Heinz and I think have been on this for, oh, how many years now? About four?
A few years.
Yeah, about four. We're kind of the tree huggers, I think, a little bit up here, so thank you, and I'm gonna be voting in favor of this on the 10th.
Thank you.
I appreciate the thorough objective analysis. I've been looking for that sort of analysis for multiple years. So thank you for putting that sort of time into it so we can come to a sound business decision. It seems like this is good for the environment, it's good for the checkbook. Those are the sorts of common sense decisions I think this board wants to make. So thank you for the good work. I look forward to the vote on the 10th.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item number 10, policy matters. 10.1, policy 2010 Innovation School Design Adoption Adoption.
This is actually a second first reading of the proposed changes to the policy 2010 Innovation School Design Adoption. The board had it on a prior agenda and elected to postpone consideration of that in order to have a study session, and we believe that the proposed revisions better incorporate the ideas that the board expressed at the study session about the importance of having the timeline tied to the district's budget cycle to ensure that the process and communication plan for any innovation design or adoption was reflective of the district values, particularly as it relates to equity, and also reflecting the geographic diversity of innovative school options. And to be clear, that policy 2010 is intended to apply for the adoption of school-wide innovation models, though some may start as pilot school within the schools, or the creation of a new school, and that the program placement process will continue to remain for things like shifting curricular focus or additional after-school or other programming opportunities.
Any questions or comments? All right, so we'll take action on the 10th. Item number 11, quarterly financial update. Item number 12, other business, 12.1 legislative priorities.
This is our annual legislative agenda that you folks have been working individually and collectively at. Its intent is to maximize the effectiveness of our 2016 state legislative session. The Tacoma Public Schools will focus on a set of issues that have the broadest impact to the district to meet the challenges. Tacoma Public Schools makes the following policy recommendations to the Washington State Legislature to achieve our mutual goal of educating students who are healthy, safe, engaged, supportive, and challenged, and who graduate college and career-ready.
Yeah, do I need a?
We would look for a motion.
I would move that we adopt the legislative agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment. So I was looking at the part about keeping our levy, the extra 4%, and I really look forward to my property taxes being reduced, as do many people in Tacoma. So, you know, I thought that was coming in the next few years, and we kind of promised that to people, so I was kind of surprised to see that on there. And the other one I wanted to ask a question about was LAPP money. How do we want to use that? I know we want, it says we want flexibility, but what is the flexibility that we want?
So the current trend that we're seeing in the LAPP funding is that the legislature is directing at specific grade levels, a real focus in on K1, and does not leave the flexibility to reach students in upper grade levels. And so what we'd be working towards is that flexibility. So support for high school programs as well as middle school or upper levels, using the same formula and the same data approaches, but definitely being able to locally define where are the needs versus the state and the legislature demanding that it is at only specific grade levels or in specific content areas.
So is that always the legislature that does that, or is it sometimes OSPI who does that in their regulations?
We've, go ahead. We have seen the latest trend is where the legislature has driven that, and so that's why we're making it a part of the legislation, or the recommendation, listening to individuals on the board to make that as part of the agenda, is that the state legislature should not be doing that, that specific direction, and that should be more left to the local school districts to decide where it is most appropriate in meeting the needs of the local students.
So what the legislature did, if I might, when I was, the last year that I was the legislative person, is they specifically designated that K1 and then within the early primary grades, and like Dr. Garcia said, that precludes us from using those funds at the middle school level where we know we have kids that still have reading and math difficulties, and even at the high school level. And I think we would, I thought we had talked about this as a district, that we would like that flexibility to focus on the needs of the kids. And I think the, what we heard this morning when Senator Murray was here about what the new act is gonna be, that it will encourage targeting of funds to kids who need special help at every school, rather than just focusing on one grade or two grades. So the, in other words, if you have a school that is doing, the majority of the kids are doing well, but you have some of the kids who are not at grade level, we will be asked to focus on that and move our funds around so that we truly are taking an equitable approach. And if you, and if we do not have that flexibility for a district like ours with high poverty that generates that dollars, that's gonna be difficult for us to do that.
Yeah, well, that's title money, which is state, federal money, and this is LAPP money, which is state money, so.
Well, but they may be tied, is what I'm saying. And I think that even though that's federal, it's federal dollars, but it's also gonna be a federal requirement for us to focus upon our individual kids at different levels and to address their abilities. And Superintendent Santorino, you asked about that question about the kids at the schools, and I think it would behoove us to have that flexibility.
Regards, Director Wenske, to the levy authority. What we as a district would be advocating is that we maintain the level authority and level equalization funding. So we'd have the determination, meaning the school board, to determine if the levy goes up or down, or the collection of that, and not have that pool being drafted into the state funding model. And so we just use an example of what a 4% levy reduction would look like. It's not the numbers that we'd be specifically advocating, but we felt like in our communication working with our governmental affairs agent, to continue to show the severity or the level of impact to some kind of scale was important to continue to work with, with the legislators.
Well, I only bring that up because when this first went into effect, it was supposed to be temporary, and it's been going on for many, many years. And our rates in Tacoma are so high compared to a lot of the other districts, so I really think that voters would really like to have a little bit of a reduction in property taxes in the long term.
I don't know, they just voted for some more, so we'll see.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, actually.
Director Oshka.
Thank you. We have a series of items that have to do with the transparency of charter schools, and of course, there's been a recent court ruling. Can we assume that if this becomes non-relevant, we will remove it from this without further action needed from the board?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great point, and just as, when we look at our priorities and our, we've had this conversation before, it's important to note that we work towards these directions and these priorities. There are other issues that may came up throughout the session that we would work closely with the board to say, is this an important issue? How does this impact us locally in Tacoma? Where is our position? And so this is just the starting point, and so there may be other issues that also come up throughout the session that we would bring back to you and have those discussions, and get your feedback and make that determination, if that should also become a priority based on the landscape of the session.
Roslyn, could you comment on how the local levy authority and levy equalization currently works and then what we're seeing, well, just the high levels, to compare and contrast where we see the legislature going?
Let's see, what time? Yeah, so.
In 10 words, your last.
Imagine.
No.
It's not good. The levy has been a conversation over the last few years as to how do we bring down levy authority and bring up state funding in a proportionate manner so that the state can take over components of the levy that are currently basic education costs. And so we shouldn't be paying for basic education costs out of our levy, but we are, and so the state needs to take over those costs, increase the state funding component, and decrease our levy. In doing that, there's an impact to the district in that they probably want to take more money away from us than we actually spend on those basic education pieces. So our real rationale behind the requesting to keep things is to ensure that they're not taking away more of our capacity than we can afford for them to take away. Our current levy is $86 million, and that's always a voter-approved amount. And so we decide as a district what that voter-approved amount can be, and if we're looking for less money, we can certainly work that in. Of the 86 million that we currently have, 45% or so is basic education dollars, excuse me, and the rest of it are choice programs, things that we want to fund or unfunded mandates like special education expenses. So it's our interest really to maintain as much of our levy capacity as we can in order to ensure that when the levy swap is complete, that we have the ability to fund the programs that we choose to fund that are truly enhancements and beyond the basic education program. Was that sufficient?
Yes, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that we've been fortunate in Tacoma to have voters that support schools, and some of the proposals in Olympia are looking at ways to drive resources into school districts that don't enjoy that sort of local voter support. And so our advocacy on this issue is to ensure that those resources that our voters have blessed us with remain in Tacoma and don't get redistributed to other jurisdictions across the state. Vice President Viall.
Thank you. A little historic perspective, and Debbie, this was even before I think you were here. Back in the late 70s, after the first court decision that was having to do with the funding of schools, which was the Dorrin decision in 1977, schools' funding formula was redone, and they looked at levy swap at that point in time. And I happened to be working with Wallace Miller, who did the Miller Report on the funding of K-12 education, and we talked to the legislature and told them one size does not fit all. And that's what's going on now. And we pointed out at that time Tacoma has always generated higher levy dollars than almost any other school district. Well, they went ahead and did it a year later, and Tacoma lost about $6 million, and in 1981, that was a fair amount of dollars to lose. And that's when the legislature then came back, went back and did the grandfathering, which allowed us to be able to increase our levy dollars again. So it's happened once before, and we keep reminding them of that, and I think the issue is, is to make sure that if they do levy swap, and we would like to see more, I know of our basic ed dollars, you know, more basic ed dollars coming from the state, and at the same time, we do not see a significant reduction in that $84 million, because if we think about what we're funding, we're doing preschools, we're doing things that are integral parts of our academic excellence program. So the real issue is making sure that what, in my mind, and having been through this before, is that whatever they do in levy swap, they should be holding the districts harmless. And so far, every time, and I know Ms. Martinez is very familiar with this, when they have run numbers with some of the new proposals, this school district has taken some pretty heavy hits, and that they don't want to do that. So I think by putting this in, it just simply says, you know, do no harm when you do levy swap. And so far, they've not been able to come up with a formula because of the mess they made, quite frankly, about 30-some years ago. And I think it's, for us, it's just to say, hey, let's take care of basic MacLeary, and then let's come back and make sure that that happens. And quite frankly, that's why we put that back into the, our legislative package. So maybe that helps kind of set the stage a little bit.
Any other questions or comments about the legislative agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero.
You go ahead.
I can't see, I can't see the agenda.
Number 12, two is letter of support request. Pierce Transit is asking the board if they would be interested in submitting a letter of support for Pierce Transit. $7.6 million, 100% electric bus grant due November 20th. The grant is provided by the Federal Transit Administration's Low or No Emission Program.
Move approval?
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, quick question.
Director Oshka.
Do we know if, when this is implemented, if the level of bus service will be maintained, or if this is something that they have to match, or anything else?
I think it's just flat out.
There was no information that we got in the letter that it was about, you know, that indicated what the bus service would be. It did say that it would increase their conservation and perhaps be able to help them replace their fleet. So it seemed to me that at least they were working toward maintaining service, they didn't talk about enhancing.
Okay. Some of their CNG.
Director Miller.
My only concern is, is this something we should be a part of? I mean, it's kind of reaching outside the mission of education, and will this open the door for more agencies? And I support electric buses and all that, but will more agencies come to the school board to ask for letter supports and just kind of overwhelm? So I'm concerned about going outside our area of education on something like this.
Well, I would say that we use buses all the time for transportation, you know, so I think that they are like the third leg of our transportation system, and I'd really like to see them taking over more and more in our city so that could enable us to start schools later and to actually help Foss out with their transportation deficit, you know, if we add, if the transit added more hours, that'd really be helpful to fill that school back up.
Vice President Viall.
Thank you. I see Pierce Transit as one of our partners and have been for a long time, back when they were Tacoma City Bus System, and I think this is a support for them just to continue to operate their services. Their CNG buses are getting old, I know that from quite a while, and this gives them an opportunity to replace some of those with what they feel is a better option right now. So that, I'm with you, I'm not gonna support every time something comes in, but because we've had over a 50-year partnership with the precursor of Pierce Transit and so on, that's why I move to support it.
You changed my mind.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries five zero. Item 13, report to the board, 13.1 MNO report.
Steve?
Good evening, President Heinz, Vice President Viall, Board of Directors, Student Representative Olson, Superintendent Santorino, and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Garcia. I'd like to welcome my team up, some of which you have met, some you have not. So starting down at the end, Steve Story, our Director of Maintenance and Operations. To his right is Tom Chalk, our Maintenance Manager. To my left is Pete Shoup, our Custodial Operations Manager. So it's our pleasure tonight to present to you, we came to you earlier this year, and gave you an overview of the MNO report that was conducted by a third party. If we can get the presentation going, I'll grab the slide.
So Board of Directors, it's also labeled in your file folder, 121123TPS Board Meeting, if you want to bring it up on your screen.
Where is it?
Under the file folders, and it would be the second one down, 20151123TPS Board Meeting.
So earlier this year, we were the recipients of a third-party review that identified six major areas that we needed to focus on. Those six takeaways were presented to you earlier this year, and through further refinement with the team, we looked at how those six factors would factor into our daily work-life. We've refined those six and put them into three areas, three major areas of focus. And so we're gonna look at the mission, vision, values for the department. We're gonna talk about our performance goals and objectives, and we're gonna talk about our communication and culture. So I'd like to introduce Steve Story to talk you through the mission, vision, and values.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening. So to gain clarity through our department, we did a lot of work with our team. we did a lot of work with our team, with the leadership and within each team member to, uh, to understand and reinforce what our mission values and visions are. Part of what we're going to end up doing is, we're going to have banners, we're going to be putting a lot of our, our bylines on, on, um, on a lot of our documents, and just so our team sees, sees what we're talking about. So, as you can, on the mission itself, we put, we brought this together, it's in alignment with the Tacoma School District Strategic Goals. The Maintenance Operations Department maintains our diverse learning environment, supporting every student every day. Then we went further, and we started looking at our vision, and took a little time with that, and, and between the team, between ourselves, we worked hard on this, and we just think our vision is important. It'd become the model K-12 Maintenance Operations Department in the state of Washington by setting industry standard for delivery of efficient and effective service and support, utilizing mission focus that drives priority and responses, preventive maintenance, and budgetary responsibilities through pride, organizational ownership. And this is just, this just brings us around to what's important to our mission. Uh, we, we do these things, we can take industry standards, not just K-12, but the commercial side as well, um, to, to, to meet what they're doing outside the K-12, and I think it's important. So, from there, we, we looked at values, and we used our quality work-life, uh, teams, and we, we came up with, with a good process, or good opportunities of what our values really are. Maintenance Operations utilizes the best industry practices and processes, superior customer service to manage district custodial and maintenance needs. Using our shared set of values, we operate with a preventive proactive approach to meet our customers' requirements and reduce MNO experience, expenses. Now, read these, all three of those, because I want to make sure you understand how important it is, the, how important these words are to us and to the school district, and how we support every student every day. We use pride because the team came up, the work, the quality work-life team came up with professionalism, respect, inspire, determination, and excellence as a collective wording, that, that's how we're going to do our business. So, with performance and goals objectives, this is the next step that we have. And I'm going to introduce Tom Chalk, my Maintenance Manager here, and he's going to go through this portion.
Good evening. For the past six months, we brainstormed how to be an outstanding school district. We wanted to improve our customer service. In order to accomplish improvements, we began by using our work order system more effectively, and by closing completed work orders that we hadn't closed in the past. We did a value stream map of our work order process. This information that we garnered from our value stream map and from our brainstorming will allow us to provide a more predictable response time and service to our customers. The following slides will illustrate a couple of measurements that we're currently tracking, our key performance indicators. The slide on my left, uh, work orders received and completed. The orange spike is a, we were, had fifty-four hundred open work orders that hadn't been closed. So, through our analysis, we found that, uh, we could close all those work orders. So, those work orders are completed at this time. The blue line represents the received during that same time. As you can see, August was a, uh, low month of reception of work orders, about seven-hundred-and-fifty work orders is what we received. Over the course of the next, uh, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen school, we plan to gain a more efficient, uh, work order system and see those lines, uh, come together a little bit closer. Uh, but it's going to take time, we've only got three months worth of data. On the right-hand side, maintenance KPIs for open work orders, again, you see a spike where we, where we actually completed the work orders that had been done, uh, just by analysis of the work order system. Um, by utilizing these two KPIs, uh, over the course of this year, we'll begin to identify even more improvement opportunities. Over the next few months, we'll use these metrics to drive database improvement decisions for the future. Next slide. One improvement is our work order priority system. In increasing from three priorities this time last year to six priorities today, the new design will help us meet our customer needs based on our customer, uh, system that affects the learning environment.
I'd like to interject that the three priority system we had a year ago was emergency, routine, and preventative maintenance. So, that's the way things were categorized. And so, uh, we were a little ineffective, I think, in that everything coming in, uh, was pretty much an emergency, and so we were spread thin. And part of the reduction in open work orders is not only just going in and cleaning up the system, but looking at how effective we can be with landing our teams in a more unified way, that while you're there, there's an open work order, and being more consistent with the work we're doing, uh, and, and more aligned between our teams, between the day shift and the evening shifts, to make sure that we're performing more effectively, more optimally. So, Tom's going to take you through, uh, the, the new work order priority structure that we've developed.
And in June, we uncovered, as I mentioned, fifty-four hundred open work orders. The spikes in the metric system slide shows the beginning of the results of a more in-depth analysis of our work orders. We increased categories from three to six to help break down and help analyze the workload ahead of us. We also defined a response and resolution time for each priority, but most importantly, we improved communication with our customers. We're out talking to our customers, we're finding out what they need, and, and we're trying to accomplish these response times and resolution times within the time we have. We still have a, a bit of work to do, but we will get to this.
I was in the office the other day, and a school was calling in, and I was really happy to hear that the person taking the call for the work order said, okay, this is a priority-three work order, and what that means for you is this is the duration of time, this is the expectations you have for when we're going to be out on your site, and this is the expectation for when the work will be complete. And that level of communication and understanding hasn't been there in the past. And so, having everybody not only, uh, operate by these guidelines, but explain and, and talk to our customers in a real-world way of sharing expectations so that we're on the same page, was very rewarding to hear.
And now, I'd like to turn it over to Pete Shoup.
Good evening. Kurt, about six months ago, we heard you tell us that you had heard these things before, but you wanted to see them. So, I'm glad that you're here tonight so that we can report back to you.
Perfect timing, Pete.
We put it off about as long as we could. But, one of the things that we have been charged with doing is improving the quality of work-life at the MNO site. And to that goal, we have developed a Quality of Work-Life Committee that has a charter. And the team made a commitment to improve the work environment of MNO by promoting positive change such as, such as an increased awareness of professional behavior, workplace civility, respect, and safety. The membership is made up of about fifteen members, uh, seven from the maintenance side, about six from the operations and custodial side, one support, um, person from the MNO site, and one member of the management team. The meetings started taking place in the first week of September, originally started out once a week to get the ball rolling, to get everyone, uh, acclimated to what the goals and missions were going to be from the quality work-life. And then, they've spread out now to about every other week, now that the, uh, work is, that's ahead of us has been established. So, um, the teams really take an ownership of this. They self-direct and lead the meetings for the, for the most part. And out of their commitment to improving the quality of work-life at MNO, several goals have been established. Number one is to provide leadership from within, and we are making strides in that direction. We have better communication at MNO. People are leaving the Quality of Work-Life meetings, they're going back to their peers, and they're reporting out, they're saying, there's change, it's positive. So, we're, we're gaining ground. Um, we're establishing a common language of what our mission and visions are, and we're sharing those with everyone. And we're establishing a distinct department identity. So, last but not, certainly not least, we're supporting every student every day.
So, one of the outputs or byproducts of the, um, work-life committee, Quality of Work-Life Committee, is a value graph that Tom's going to take you through real quick.
Well, what we did was we brainstormed how to improve the quality of work-life, but also how to be an outstanding school district. Once we completed, we wanted to categorize that brainstorming into a value graph, and it's identifying small efforts, small value, large efforts, big value, and, and anything in between. Once the value graph was complete, we then categorized those into a, uh, matrix, into a priority matrix, and identifying suspenses, identifying priorities, and identifying points of contact, so we can track the progress of each of these, uh, each of these ideas or brainstorming, to make us a better, uh, better, have a better quality of work-life, and to become a truly outstanding school district and the vision of the school district.
So, with that, and the next focus was the communication and culture. And as you can tell from just the last two focuses, it's all about the culture and the communication that we have instilled within our department and outside our department. As mentioned before, when we meet, when we meet the customer, we meet the customer at their shop, at their office, in their, in their classroom, and they're seeing something different from us. Because what they ask for, and when they, we know there's a requirement, we're making that happen. And it's within twenty-four hours, within forty-eight hours, but they're seeing us, and we're on, and we're on site. So, part of that is, deals with the MNO reorganization. We were to put more leadership where it needed to be. And as you can see, a spread of here and who we have as, as nighttime supervisors, that leadership means a lot to our staff. We're able to touch what we need to touch, we're able to make decisions where they need to make decisions, and it's made, it's made the difference that this organization's needed. With that, we've done a lot of the team communication, and most of that is formal team meetings. And that's basically gone from weekly, uh, team leadership meetings to weekly team lead meetings, to monthly after-work or, or at the end-of-day shift meetings. It's gone monthly, we're going to start monthly, uh, regional custodial meetings. But it's all about communication, up and down the chain. Everything we know is being pushed down, and what we're hearing is bringing, brought, brought back up, very transparent. And we've seen through this, through this, this, this metaphorphosis of this, this organization, we've seen that how the communication and culture's made a, a large difference. The next slide will show how we do executive overviews. Basically, what this does is take, it takes a root cause, and we, and we do our homework on it, we, we document everything that's going on within this, this one here is, uh, improved communications and maintenance, as you can see. And then, we, we look for solutions. We find cul- conclusions, and then, as you see there, we look for next steps, because it's all about continuous improvement. We're never, we're never satisfied with what the, what, what step we have right now, we're looking for the next thing. And, and that's what this, uh, does for us, is executive summary. And we've done this on, I would say, three or four right now, Tom and Pete, we've done this on, and it's made a difference just with our teams, because they know we're, we're part of this. And we take, we take pictures because it's important to show where we're at and where we're going to go.
If I, if I can add, we also have a board that this is actually displayed for everyone to see in the organization, and we'll post these, uh, executive overviews along with our metrics. So, everybody's buying into, not only just, uh, just management's buying in, but everybody's buying in. They see what, what we're, what we're faced with, and how, and are, are more than willing to jump on board and provide suggestions of how we can do the job better and reach being an outstanding school district.
So, as you can see from this slide right here, future goals, I'd like to just point out that just the two pictures here, not inclusive of everything we've done, but this, these two pictures have given us the opportunities to succeed, to excel, to, to a lot of opportunities. Lincoln High School, and we had the visit from the President of China to Stadium Bowl that continues to, to, we do work on that, and it, and it's, we do. I'm proud of what we've been doing. I'm proud of what we've been doing with the city. City's done some great things with us. But when I say here, future goals, I say, you know, our future success depends on these abilities that we meet and exceed, existing achievements. We can't rest on our laurels. I understand how to capitalize on those same advancements that we've done with the city of Tacoma, Metro Parks. Partnership is outstanding here. As you can see today with work at Tacoma Power, and the things that we do with that is important. Those same advan- advancements, crafting a culture of continuous improvement, building on existing partnerships, and creating new affiliations, defining our ability to support every student every day. That's what it takes here. These four, these four bullets, they say a lot, in so many words, there's a lot there, as you can see. We identify as, with the district and the state. We strengthen our work order priorities, where there's a structure, the way we report them, and time the compete, completion rate is transparent. There's nothing there that, that we don't have, that nobody can see, we can show that. We've revamped, refined our preventive maintenance program, Kurt, we're going to do this, we're going to coordinate with capital replacement plans to, to meet those demands, but we know how important preventive maintenance can save us on the back end. And provide professional development through coaching, mentoring, and technology. There's nothing more, more important to our staff than to continue to teach, to coach, to, to push our team to be better than what they are today, and stay up with that technology that keeps driving us to do more. So, today, this is who we are, we support every student every day. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Director Winsko.
So, I, I have a co- comment about Stadium Bowl. Um, so, we had the big event, and we had to close it. My son, I, I was on a trip for eighteen days, and I got back, and my son said that it rained again, and he went down, he cleared the drain out again because it was going to start cascading down. So, do we have somebody, you talked about night crew. I mean, when we know we're going to have one of those pineapple expresses, which we do know about oftentimes in advance, do we assign people to go to these schools? Because I know we also had problems at, um, uh, in Furcrest, um, to like clean the drains out, you know, in advance. And I think that a lot of that stadium thing could have been prevented, um, a lot of the damage, if those drains had been, uh, cleared up the street about a block or two. But, um, so, how are we handling that?
I'll let Tom, I'll let Tom, Tom's been on that, that job a few times.
Okay. Um, and, and you're right about the cleaning of the, um, the drains. So, what we've done since October tenth, uh, two thousand and fifteen, is we're out there in force, both with the, uh, city of Tacoma, they go out on a routine basis. Matter of fact, that the, the last time we had a warning, uh, around the thirty-first of October, they were, they had their teams out, they went to yellow, they changed their, uh, emergency shift change. And I, I went out there quite often myself and saw their team cleaning the, the drains out. Our team was out there cleaning the drains out, we had people deployed out there. Um, that the, in the next couple of weeks, we expect, hopefully by mid-December, we'll have five additional drains, uh, at the alley of Second Street, and also up the alley towards, uh, Third Street. Uh, because there are no drains, really, there's two drains at the top of the intersection of Tacoma and Second Street, and it's just not enough. Everything comes down that street. That, essentially, uh, quite frankly, in a briefing we just went through, uh, most of the water system for Tacoma drains right to the bowl. So, so, we've been working very closely with the city of Tacoma to remove the obstacles to draining that system before it gets into, uh, and onto the stairs. Uh, we've also taken precautionary measures on the stairs to divert the water from going over and eroding onto the, onto the field. And we diverted it, it goes down the, the hard, uh, concrete stairs, so it's really just water dumping onto the, to the, um, Stadium Bowl, Stadium floor, preventing further damage or any damage to the, uh, stadium, to the bowl.
So, I'd like to add to that, and we talked about, so the city of Tacoma's come to us, Environmental Services has come to us and shown us the plan they have. And as Tom mentioned, starting the, the week after Thanksgiving, which is like the first of December, they will be putting in some more catch basins at that Second Avenue. And there's a, there's a plan that they have in the, between, between now and the summertime to put more catch basins in. The flow of water toward, the flow of water toward the, uh, Stadium Bowl starts at Jason Lee and comes that way, right? And they're going to try to catch that, that portion of it. And they realize that, that, uh, there's, there's not enough catch basins. Um, they have the drainage, they just want the catch basins to catch that water. So, within that, they understand they're going, going backwards, so they're going to start catching that water early and moving it back. So, I, I see, I see a big difference in how we catch that water. As you know, we have, we have sandbags up right now diverting that water off of, off the, off the sidewalks, which was pushing that water pretty fast. That's where the catch basins will go on that corner. Okay?
I'd just like to add what's, going back to the report around communication, um, Steve has really taken the lead to communicate with the cabinet team and the city, and we're able to start to track that. And so, moving- And so, moving from that proactive approach, all based in response, not all based, but in this response to the Moore Report, increased communication, where you can actually see the communication, where the two agencies are really working together. I haven't had the pleasure to meet you yet, Tom, but I've really enjoyed your communication and how there's targeted teams going out when tracking the weather. I'd like to remind folks, these are 1,000-year storms. And then what was the next one, a 500-year storm or something? I mean, I was nervous this year was going to be, or this weekend, 125-year storm. I mean, there's records amounts of waters, but I hope you also see from the team this preventative approach, knowing that it would be easy, and I think arguably might have happened in the past where, well, we've done with that one, and now we just need to move on to the next one. This team's really taken the lead on thinking about how do we improve so that the storm, if it's another 1,000 or a 5,000-year storm, that we haven't ignored it and we've tried to be proactive. And then really appreciate their willingness to communicate in a transparent manner with our partners, as well as the rest of the teams, to say, here's how we're doing it, all the way down to the principals, and saying, this team will be out here at these times removing this black cover so it can drain into theirs. And so, really, credit and testimony to putting it into action. And I hope you get a chance to see that in upcoming months and years as well.
Yeah, well, I do like all the different categories now, and the fact that you're telling people when things are going to be done. I think that's really great, so, thank you.
Vice President Viall.
I just want to comment on the incident at Furcrest Wainwright. I got a call on that 100-year, 1,000-year storm morning about 8:00 in the morning.
It was wittier, I think, wasn't it?
Well, it was Wainwright, actually, the construction site.
We've had water issues at both.
Yeah, at both. But this one, as a compliment to Steve's team, Mayor Viall called me at home and said we have water draining down out of a detention pond over, and we thought at first it was wittier, found out it was Wainwright, and someone had called him, and he was at the restaurant. And so, I said, I'll see what's going on. So I text Steve, and about 20 minutes later, Steve calls me on the phone and says he's got the contractor on the phone, the contractor's out there, he's talking to, David gave me the name of the resident. So within a half an hour, I got a call back from Mayor Viall saying, you know, Murakami's just great. And so, that's a change too. And I know the rest of the staff was involved in that, but we got ourselves some goodwill over in a part of that neighborhood that wasn't too happy about us building that school that far back on the property, and got good relationships. So that, to me, is a real good example of the change in what's going on in our maintenance and operation. So, good job. And it was real nice, David called me and was just gushing about how good we are to them in Furcrest, so thank you.
Director Oshka.
Thank you. I love KPIs and continuous improvement. I love when people can get there. It's a very difficult place to get sometimes, especially, you mentioned, was it 5,800?
54.
So somebody sat behind a desk and read through cases and found out if it was closed or open, so my kudos to them as well. I know that for a work environment, any work environment, if people aren't used to KPIs, that's kind of a frightening thing because everybody always thinks it's going to be used against them instead of for them first. So that you're doing that simultaneous to a goal on morale is doubly difficult. So I appreciate the challenge that's before you and the progress that you're making. I wanted to make a comment about those executive reports, briefings. Those are really cool. How often do you post those?
Once we complete a project. So I thought it was important when we began to improve the communication that we showed not only the boss some improvement, but our staff. And, you know, they were looking for, part of it is, you know, we want to be treated with respect, we want to be listened to. And by showing them this executive overview and showing them a value graph and a value map, a value stream map, they understand that they're being heard. And I think that's the important piece. So we'll do that, we've got it for our leadership team, we've got it for our quality of work life, we've got it for our maintenance team, we've got it for installing the smart boards. So something of a project nature, we'll put that together, and it'll be something where you can quickly look at a small page, get an idea of what the problem was, what the condition was, what steps we took to fix it, what's the implemented condition, what's the result. And in lean, that's basically a lean tool. In lean terminology, you want to get 20% improvement. You know, for a meeting, I don't know that we can show 20% improvement, but I can tell you that there's been improvement in the morale by doing these and by communicating to the team. We communicate with them monthly, and then next steps, because it's never over.
Right, right. And the continuous improvement piece. Along those same lines, I also really value the communication part, and I value lean, quite frankly. I also know that it's really easy to not communicate, and then when you're implementing that, it's a whole other project that you have to find time for. So I'm curious how you found time to do it. I mean, because we didn't increase staff, right? So has everybody just turned around their work?
Passion for excellence.
We were able to add two positions. And so, a year ago, we had one maintenance manager and one custodial supervisor. The custodial supervisor oversaw around 200 people working six to seven days a week, 24 hours a day, one person. So he never left the office.
And he didn't get to communicate to individuals?
He was on the phone all the time, and he was putting out fires. We had one maintenance manager overseeing 57 people, working three shifts a day. And so, we brought Tom and Pete into the day positions, and we have two evening supervisors, so that's helping spread the load. And one of the great things that I'm looking forward to in the coming month, Pete's going to start regional custodial operations meetings by high school region. And so, the high school will host to start, we'll bring the middle schools and the elementary schools from the feeder pattern to the high school, and they'll talk best practices. And those monthly meetings will rotate. How many meetings are you going to be doing a month? How many regions are we going to cover? Two?
The plan is to have four regions.
Four regions a month.
A month.
And so, it's the first time, that's one of the hardest things I think I've seen, is our maintenance group is together under one roof, they start and end the day together. Their shifts overlap a bit, so there's continuity in talking about what's the hot issue of the day and how to hand off projects. But our custodial side is so spread out, overall, you know, 60-plus sites, and getting the time for those guys, a lot of those guys are the firemen, a lot of those guys have to be on site if the boiler's firing, if there's heat in the building. And so Pete's going to them and figuring out how to do it regional, how to talk best practices, how to open up those communication channels. Communication's going to be a big one, and so we're actually going to start talking to Menon about translators and trying to figure out how to break down some of those cultural barriers. And then the other part was, I was talking to the folks from UW-T about PBIS training for our maintenance operations folks.
Excellent. I have two more comments, then I'll give it up. Except I just spaced the first one to just disclose, I was going to say it. So I'm going to skip to the President of China visit. It was great what happened at Lincoln High School between the city and the schools, how much that area was cleaned up for the President of China. As you know, I live over there and I'm fairly involved with the community over there. What I keep hearing is, why did it take the President of China to maintain that? So I hear the continuous improvement cycle that we're in, and I think that you guys are doing a great job, but I wanted to pass that feedback on because people noticed.
That's not the first time we've heard it. So we're planning more presidential visits. Just kidding. I'm sorry.
Bring them all to Lincoln.
But actually, I'd say the executive summary that we used, that you saw, we're going to use Lincoln High as an example of how we can take a school and change it with just the personnel we used to do that and to stay on top of those things. We understand, there's, you know, the number of schools are trying to meet those, it just happened to be an opportunity that the president was coming, and we threw people at that. But what we've learned from that is that more preventive maintenance in a sense of school identity and trying to find out what needs to be done in little bits versus having one large bit being done, the executive summary's shown us that. You know, what was the root cause and what we defined as being what needed to be repaired?
And I did remember what I want to say, so I want to say it before I forget again. I mean, I think that as we go through the whole every student every day philosophy as a board, it's been also making sure that everybody that works for TPS knows that they're vital in that, right? And so, what I heard was that coming through a lot. So I wanted to tell you that when you got to that last slide, supporting every student every day, I nearly applauded. So I hope that they do know that, that we value their work in that fashion, and that it is really vital work.
It's our new language.
Student Representative Olson.
I just want to say on behalf of all the stadium students that we're very thankful for all the work they've put in. Oh, because my father's also a custodian in the Tacoma School District, so I know that you guys put in a lot of work at school. And I know that right away when we have a problem that you guys are there. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I just give one little other kudos in regards to the President of China visit? Sometimes it gets lost behind the scenes, so I'm going to share you my interpretation of that, how that all happened real quickly. Obviously, we didn't know whether that was going to happen or not, and very much last minute, when we let Steve and his team know that conversation, we said, well, what are we going to do? The way I recollect the conversation, Steve responded, well, this is what we're going to have to do as part of our preventative anyways. And what a better place to start than on the east side. So it's not like we're doing this for the president, but why not just start here and then say it's as part of the president's visit? And I want to give him that kudos because that's the kind of equity conversation that we've been talking about at the board level and the regional, about where do certain spots of town, what facilities need that, and how do we start to distribute that? And so, these guys are taking that and really putting that into practice behind the scenes. Would it have happened as fast? Maybe not, but I am confident it would have happened. And so, using that as a crisis slash opportunity, but really to living out the work is important.
Right, thank you. Thank you for the good report.
Can I add one? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll say, you accepted the challenge. Thank you.
If I can say one more item about the president's visit. Next month, we'll have a team meeting, and we're going to give out a picture that has all of our team on it, a picture of the president, a picture of Lincoln. And it's basically proud to be part of the school district. And that's going to be vitally important to our team, to know that they are actually recognized for what they did. And the principal of Lincoln is going to actually give out that to our team. So I think that's real important, and it'll show, and it'll get everybody on board to what Dr. Garcia just said. It's a change, and it's going to be a change in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item 13.2, academic excellence.
Thank you so much. You guys are doing a great job.
So the team's going to come up here, and I'm going to go ahead and get myself in trouble, and the superintendent slapped my hand. There are 51 slides. So here's what we're going to do tonight, because this is not new data, and I want to remind folks that it's 24/7, 365 days a year that you can look at our data. We're going to talk at a very high level, and we're going to invite the board to work with the president. And if there are future conversations that you'd like us to have on very specific elements, for example, we're going to cover a variety of topics because, as you know, I believe we have 14 different benchmarks specifically under academic excellence. We filter them all by ethnic codes, free and reduced lunch, special ed, English language learners, parts of town. So it's very comprehensive and complex. And we'll use this as a starting point for the conversation, and knowing that we will be coming back to in different elements, such as graduation rates and other elements out there. And then, if we can agree that if you would like us to come back for any specific element and with more detail towards that plan, we can do that. But we'll clip pretty quickly through this, if that's okay with you folks. Does that seem reasonable? So I'm going to charge the team to hit to those points, and I think that you'll find they've hit some very highlights, and so we'll just hit the highlight and move on. But feel free to stop and ask us to move forward at any point. Fair enough? Okay, team, you're on the clock.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to start off here. First, I do want to thank Marie Verhar for her work on this PowerPoint. She did the bulk of it, and her team and my team worked together, so it's another team effort. As you know, this is goal number one, our academic excellence. All students perform at or above grade level, and we will eliminate disparities among all groups of students. As Dr. Garcia told you, that we are not going to cover all of the 14 benchmarks, we're going to cover 10 of them. Graduation and dropout benchmark data continues to be finalized, will be highlighted at a separate time. Additional benchmarks, the industry certifications, will be included at a later presentation. And as always, we try to include an appendix which has all the data that you can find right from the website, and we have the address there for you to take a look.
So real quickly, as those that are watching home, at the last slide, you'll see the appendix, it's hyperlink. That'll also be on our website, when you look under the, you'll see under the strategic plan, there's monitoring reports. That allows folks to see that data in the different clips without having to feel like they've got to filter it all manually. And so, it's all done by the team. So when you go online, just click onto the board reports, look at the agenda, hyperlinks all to all the specific data there for you.
So the first benchmark we're going to take a look at is the high school extracurricular activity involvement. And this slide, when you look closely at it, shows that there's been a direct increase in the number of students who are participating. We are highlighting some of the subgroups here and the amount of increase. Hispanics up by 16%, Pacific Islanders up by 31%. Other subgroups, you can see the females, males, special education, free and reduced lunch, English language learners, all up. Same with the middle school activities. We have also highlighted them. You can see multirace, Native Americans, white, all up. And we attribute this to the increase in the number of activities that are offered. We have the football program at the middle school. We also continue, our next steps for this is to continue their participation with our partners that we have with Metro Parks. We do have a program that's going to be increased with Geodrome being added this year through Metro Parks, so that's going to be an increase that we're going to see. We also know that the secondaries have not really submitted all of their club participation data yet, and will do so by the 4th of December. And we also continue to see growth in our Special Olympics. Unified sports program now includes two sports in five high schools, and we'll be starting soccer in the spring at middle school level. So we continue to see an increase in our extracurricular activities. Also, student life, we'll work with community partners to gain access to their data so that we can see how many of our students are participating through those partners. And also, we're exploring online registration processes to make signing up easier and more accessible to more people.
So real quick pause there, one of the unique pieces that you're going to continue to see is that value of being engaged inside the school or outside the school and calibrating that definition. So it's just not that I'm enrolled, or I go to the Boys and Girls Club once, but if I go 52 days and we agree that that's 52 days, then we'll count that as part of extracurricular activities because we're sharing data, we're communicating, and we don't want to pull kids in different directions. So we're really aligning those efforts, and then we'll be able to report back down to the specific kids, which ones are engaged in one or more, or which kids are not engaged with clarity and nothing at all.
No, no, you're not going to.
A little background noise.
No.
So the next benchmark we're going to take a look at is ninth grade course failures. We have some data here showing so far this year what our data looks like. We're not all that impressed with it right now, we are looking closely at it. You can see here in this next slide, what we wanted to do is take a look at where were we, you know, in the last three years at this week. This is week eight data. And we wanted to compare what changes there may have been. So you can see that week eight failing one class in 13, 14 was 22%, 14, 15, 26, and 15, 16, 21%. So we are seeing a little bit of a change there. Week eight also failing two or more classes, you can see in 13, 14, 16, and then 12% in 10. So as we drill down, we do see some changes and for the better, and we are, you know, just trying to figure out, you know, what our next steps are going to be in that arena. End of year failing one class, you can see we're not doing as well from 13, 14, 17.5% and then 14, 15, 18.4%. And then end of year failing two or more classes, again, not showing a huge discrepancy and not moving in the right direction either, so we are taking a closer look at that. Our key findings are that.
Just offer a quick comment.
Yes.
I would be interested to see this, to me, is this data set up in a way that expresses some of the concerns we've had with standardized tests?
Right.
It's not going to work? I'd be interested to see those freshmen, how they're now performing as sophomores versus this freshman class compared to last freshman class.
That's good. We can do that. Yeah, that's good.
Cool, that would be good. Thank you.
So our key findings for this data that we've looked at is that fewer students are failing one class, one or class, sorry, I went too fast. Fewer students are failing one class, two or more classes in 14, 15 at the eight-week mark than in years past. More time is needed to fully realize the benefits of various programs, strategies, grading linked to standards, the use of extended day opportunities, our Avid program, and standard-based instruction. Those are just a few of the things that we want to take a little closer look at. Our next steps is we are currently implementing an early warning system. This is kind of our first year doing that with our ninth graders, and all of our high schools are engaged in that. We can take some time and talk to you more about what that looks like, but basically... We can take some time and, and talk to you more about what that looks like, but basically it's taking a look at those early course failures and making contact with those students and putting a plan in place to help them improve. Uh, we also continue our efforts with the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, our PBIS program. We've added another cohort to that this year and we continue to monitor the data that we see there as well. Uh, we have four waiver days that we've been granted before by the state and, um, we are developing plans for students not meeting standards. So our, our, our staffs are working closely on, uh, developing, uh, programs for students on those waiver days. Uh, directly, uh, um, related to our, the data that they're looking at. Our summer school program for eighth gr- moving to ninth grade, a, a great transition program. And all secondary schools are working to implement at least two high-yield avid strategies, uh, building, building wide using Cornell Notes and, um, um, note, which are notebook planners and, uh, training for fifty staff, uh, including coaches.
Vice President Bill?
But just a quick one, something that's bothered me on this ninth grade failure is, and maybe we're doing more now with the summer program, but we all know kids that have struggled in, in middle school. Are we doing a better job of looking at, at-risk eighth graders going into the ninth grade and, and ma- and making sure that maybe they need some extra help? In other words, if you're not passing what you should be passing in the eighth grade, then how are you going to pass these class more difficult, more academic rigor classes in the ninth grade? And that's something I'd like to perhaps have us explore, uh, maybe sometime during this year is how do we, uh, targets not the, well, it's a right word, kids who have been struggling and how can we help them before they get into high school where the struggle gets worse?
Right.
So I'd like to see some data on that and some ability for us to do more intervention with our eighth grade kids.
So what, what, well, as an action step, we'll bring you some more information on our early warning indicators project that's targeting the ninth. And the second is, is your, uh, expansion, you've, you've asked us to really think about the transition activities. And so the summer boost program really targets eighth graders to ninth graders, uh, short block. Uh, what are the skills necessary, but we can, we can bring that back to you in a future report.
I guess what I'm looking at is, and maybe this is a middle school issue, is for us to be doing more at that level, seventh and eighth grade with the kids. And maybe we are, who are struggling. And even looking at fifth grade, if our kids are still struggling in fifth grade and then sending them into sixth and so on and so on, that we begin that struggling student identification a little bit earlier than just where we are now. And, and I know we got a lot on our plate, but maybe that's something we start talking about, using some of those dollars for intervention. That's something that I would really.
We're definitely talking about it now.
Great, super. And that's all I'm asking and, and bring us some ideas or some opportunities so that we aren't looking at that flat line or going in the wrong direction, cause we are making our coursework more rigorous and that's gonna make it more difficult for some of the kids to get caught up at that level. Thank you.
Along those same lines, when we identify kids at risk in middle school, we're, um, and they go on to high school, I know we track that data. Um, I would like us as part of this to be looking at the number of kids that are going from middle school to high school that are at risk by high school. So if there's a high school that has a disproportionate amount, we're making sure that we're, uh, providing funding or supports for that high school that are convinced certain with, uh, uh, from an equity standpoint and the needs that they have. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's why we need that flexibility for that.
Yeah.
So the short answer is, is that, is, uh, Lincoln High School has more kids.
Actually, I know that, yeah.
First Creek and Stewart have been labeled as failing schools, depends on what you data you use. Uh, that was one of your pri- uh, previous driving factors in the need for Lincoln Center to be school-wide. And so we will continue to bring some of that data to you in a, in a report, uh, where we can, it's available by region, which schools, uh, what feeds that. What we do need to do is continue as a district to decide what are early warning indicators. And we have, and we've had a lot of conversations amongst staff is, is the adults' perceptions of being ready versus academic performance being ready. Um, and how do we make sure that we're not labeling our kids from a deficit model and saying that's a reason why they can't be successful? To here's what we need kids to be academically, here's where they are, and here's the extra interventions and support necessary to bring them up and not use that as an excuse.
And that's what I want, Dr. Garcia. I don't want the deficit model. I want, if I'm not doing well in reading, what do I need to get where I need to get so that I'm part of that four-year-on-time graduation rate?
So as much as I love this conversation, I've got a group of people waiting for me.
You know, I was thinking that, um, if I can interject for a minute, back in the day, we used to have some of the longest school board meetings ever, right? They all went from like five-thirty until sometimes ten o'clock at night. And I thought that really I should bring up about fourteen thousand more points because it, for old times sake, you should be here. And then I'll buy your first round.
Well, and we're late because of you.
So as much as I love it, I'm gonna see my group of people and, uh, thank you, everybody. Have a fun time.
All right, moving on to our next benchmark, we're gonna take a quick look at the eighth grade report cards. This is last year's data, so semester one, semester two of two thousand fifteen, two thousand fourteen fifteen. And you can see there by the end of second semester, we did have an increase, um, of students earning a C or better.
So this is a new benchmark and this was also in, I think, uh, important for you to know that we heard from our principals that said, we really wanna track the grades of our middle school students so they start to see the value in the conversations that we can start to have with staff about the values of passing classes. Um, so that was one of the, there was multiple reasons, but.
Are these the middle school principals and the high school principals?
Both, the secondary principals conversation.
All right, and breaking that data down a little bit more, we see the various subgroups. And you see that all subgroups are up with the exception of one, uh, with second semester earning a C or better. Moving along to algebra geometry for eighth grade, this data is a little bit more flat in eighth grade. You see a slight reduction. Looking at the subgroups again, um, you see that there's a slight decrease or pretty static data, if you will. So what are our key findings here? As we said, there were slight gains in ELA. Females were receiving higher grades in both. Our math grades are stagnant and in some cases declining. There was a slight increase in ELL for both ELA and math. And there was a slight increase in free and reduced lunch in ELA. So looking at some of our next steps, we have brought in a transition middle school curriculum to be more aligned to the rigor of the new Washington State standards. And we are also taking a look at some of the formative assessments that go along with that curriculum. And schools are spending some time in their PLCs, tearing those assessments apart, looking at the data, analyzing student performance, determining what next steps are needed in terms of instruction. All of our middle school and high school principals are conducting monthly walkthroughs by region and they are using a tool that was designed in collaboration with teaching and learning and K-12 instruction that looks at the high-yield strategies that we know leverage our students' learning, um, most considerably. So they're using that tool as they walk through. Also, we have increased collaboration between our general programs and our categorical programs. We have developed some targeted professional development for our students, for our teachers who are teaching ELL and special education students. Our elementary, middle, and high school math curriculum guides have been refined and revised to be more closely aligned to our new standards. And we're also working to build a sustainable model for our math studio work that has been a part of Tacoma Public Schools now for several years. I guess that is me, sorry. Taking a look at our next benchmark. Academic rigor. We know that since the inception of the Academic Acceleration Policy, we saw great, uh, gains in this area. And it's important to know that the data you're looking at is two thousand fifteen data. So some of this will be changing as schedules continue to change for our students. But if we take a look at this data broken down a little bit more, you see those great jumps that were made with the inception of your policy, Academic Acceleration. And those gains continue to be made up until October when this, uh, was created. So we see, if we add those two numbers together, it's important to see that while two percent doesn't seem like a lot, uh, twenty-one percent is extraordinarily wonderful for our students receiving opportunities in these rigorous classes. Looking at that data a little bit differently, here are your subgroups. And you can see that all of our subgroups have shown increase. With the exception of one that is unchanged in terms of enrollment in those rigorous classes. So what are our findings? We have had substantial increases from thirteen to fourteen with the inception of your Academic Acceleration Policy, twenty-four oh six. We continue to see increases in fourteen fifteen. And as we look at those numbers, as I said, we combine them to see that we are doing some great things for our students there. Uh, there were notable increases for our students, Pacific Islander, Native American, and special education students. What are some of our next steps around enrolling students in the rigorous courses? We continue to provide professional development to our AP and IB teachers in collaboration with College Board and IB. We've offered after-school tutoring sessions to our AP, IB, and college and high school students so that they're able to receive more support. We've increased rigor across all grade levels and in all content areas through our teacher and principal PD by looking at that depth of knowledge level to ensure that what we're teaching students stays at those higher levels of depth of knowledge. We're also exploring a half-day summer bridge program for students that teachers would actually come the full day, so the students would leave at half-day. Teachers would stay the other half a day to continue with some professional development.
So the next, um, benchmark that we have for you tonight is the acceptance to next institution. And you can see by the data that, uh, that we have, where's the marker? On the first slide, uh, the increase in, uh, the number of students who've been accepted into an institution over the last three years from forty-one percent in two thousand thirteen to sixty-five percent in two thousand fifteen. Further, you can see as broken down by into subgroups, uh, the, the increases, um, in two thousand fourteen fifteen, um, they're phenomenal. And, uh, show a great, uh, effort, uh, that has been made, uh, in those, in that particular area. Also by subgroups, um, you can see that, um, we're up, uh, quite dramatically there as well. Uh, just to point out, uh, ELL up thirty-six percent, um, is, is very, very good. Our key findings in this area is that more students are accepted to a post-high school institution in all subgroups. Increased promotion of college-going culture across our system. And, um, we are observing the impact of, um, the systemic, uh, efforts from cradle to college in, in our efforts in, in getting those college initiatives, um, moved on through. Oh, sorry, I'm forgetting to click. Our next steps are, continue to foster partnerships with our local universities um, and our technical institutions to promote partnerships with Tacoma Public School teachers and college and university staffs. Uh, we, our first, our first, uh, partnership was with TCC, but we're continuing to do that with other colleges. And it's, uh, that alignment has, has proven to be quite beneficial. Our work with Tacoma College Success Network, uh, continues to demystify the pathway to college for our students and, um, making that, uh, a reality for them. Our next steps are to, um, continue our, uh, focus in elementary, middle school on promoting college awareness. Uh, collaboration, continue collaboration with our partners. We've got them listed there, Palmer Scholars, ACT Six, Trio, College Bound, Tacoma Housing Authority. Broaden our scope of world language competency assessments. Marie told me today that we've given two this year so far. Pardon me?
We will be giving that twice this year.
Be giving that twice this year? And, um, we are promoting our policy two thou- two thousand, which is, uh, course challenging and allowing students to, uh, attain credits.
Real quickly, we oftentimes will label a partner or two or three or something. That is not necessarily an exclusive list of folks, so that, uh, as you know, you may be looking at there and saying, well, what about this? But in the essence of, uh, time and visual texts, we try not to label every partner, so we just may give you a highlight here and there.
So it's my honor to be the first to present to you a smarter balanced assessment as the new kid on the block. So here we have, uh, our fifth grade state assessment and I'd just like to quickly remind us that this is a benchmark. It's difficult to compare it to anything before since it's a brand-new assessment. And also ELA now includes reading, writing, speaking, listening, and language. Where before our benchmark was just around reading. So it's important to think about, this is inclusive of five subject areas or content areas within ELA. So taking a look at our fifth grade standards-based assessment data, or excuse me, smarter balanced assessment data, I'll get it right. It is a standards-based assessment. Um, we have, uh, fifty percent of our students at or above, um, standard in fifth grade English Language Arts. And the state, it's about, was about fifty-eight percent, so just below the state. In mathematics, our district has forty-two percent of our students performing at or above standard compared to the state's forty-eight percent. Looking at this data in subgroups, you can see down the line that, um, there isn't really a standout that, that they're fairly uniform in terms of the percentages. In eighth grade, we look at our eighth grade, uh, SBA data. So for our eighth graders, we have approximately forty-five percent of our students at or above standard as compared to our, the fifty-seven percent of the state. In eighth grade mathematics, approximately thirty-seven percent of the students were at or above standard as compared to forty-six percent at the state level. Again, looking at that broken down into our subgroups. There's a little more data about females and males, special education, free and reduced.
So I'm gonna pause this real quickly here. It's important to note that we recognize there are multiple achievement gaps in both fifth and eighth grade. And with a new assessment and multiple standards, we have a new, new landscape, if you will, and starting. And so we're rolling up our sleeves, going back on what have we learned? What is the supports that are necessary? But we're very aware that there are multiple achievement gaps. There is no such thing as an achievement gap and you can see by the numbers where they're at. And so we'll work through to make sure that we shore up what core curriculum is, but also make sure that we have targeted interventions that are relevant to the students.
You know, one thing that struck me as I looked at these eighth grade is normally our kids do much worse in math relative to the state standard. And this time they do better in the math and they didn't do well in the language arts. And in the past, if I'm correct, we usually have done better in the language arts. Uh, I know this is a new ballgame, but I was just struck by the fact we weren't that far below the state standard in math. So, uh, maybe we're, look at the positive on that, I assume too, about what we're doing right in the math areas. We're not just gonna look at what we've not done, but where are we gonna look at our positives also?
Yeah, we're a growth mindset district. You've been a, a continuous improvement, so this is the new baseline. Uh, there's a lot of different celebrations with a multiple measure assessment. You can see some of those in accountability system. One of the a-ha's for us is, is we haven't really broken out to how many kids were, uh, met the standard in reading. So these are that combination of five different sub-skills in there. And so, you know, you have situations where there's listening skills, where there may be huge variance, uh, where staff didn't know, students didn't know. But, so we'll, we'll really start to dive into those results and break them down into what is our reading strengths? What are there areas that we need? What are the trends? Um, because different group of kids to different group of kids and then we'll need to build on that cohort approach. What do these kids need? And that's what I mean by targeted supports. So although you've exited out of fifth grade, what is it that you need in sixth grade now to support your fifth grade results?
I'd, I'd also be interested, um, is there a way to see how we compare against other large urban school districts statewide?
Is, I believe that that data will start to ultimately be coming out.
All right, and moving along to our eleventh grade data. And again, this data represents the fact that a number of our students chose not to take the assessment in eleventh grade. So for, of the students who were assessed, approximately twenty-three percent of them were at or above standard as compared to the, to state's twenty-six percent. So as a state, we were low in terms of, um, students taking this assessment. In math, our district, our students, nine percent of them were at or above standard as compared to the state's thirteen point seven percent.
Superintendent Centauri?
Marie, can you tell us, um, again, what percentage of the eleventh graders actually took the test? Do you know?
I don't know that. Like, we can find that out for you though.
Could you do that? Cause you know, this is such a skewed base that it's. Because now this is such a skewed base that it's-
It's well under half.
Right.
So just, and we'll find you the exact number, but we'll find, it's well under half. This 11th graders, and we saw it, and it was a phenomenon across the state, they quickly realized, why am I doing this? I don't have to use it for graduation rates. Often, they had already met their graduation requirements as far as standardized tests. And so we'll get the exact number to you.
What my mind raises about is, is this a statistically valid benchmark for us? If this is going to continue, I don't know.
So we've set goals that we, and we haven't set goals around SBA, but we'll bring those to you in the next future board meeting for the other benchmarks that we didn't. We may have to adjust that goal based on this year's results.
Well, what I'm asking is that-
But we'll go to work based on this year's results.
Right, and if it's not next year statistically valid, then perhaps we need to take a look at finding a better benchmark for 11th grade.
Right, and we believe that through communication with our families and our students-
I think that's some of it too.
-that they will begin also to understand, there are some benefits to taking this assessment at 11th grade in terms of if students scored a certain level, it can be used for entrance into colleges and university, colleges in our area.
Well, there was a lot of hysteria around this, quite frankly, and I think maybe some of that's dissipated now, I hope.
So as you've already stated, some of our key findings is, this is year one of a brand-new assessment and sets our baseline for years to follow. As, again, as you've mentioned, the 11th grade data does not reflect student performance due to the large number of students who did not complete the assessment. And we know, as Dr. Garcia mentioned, continued work is needed to align our teaching and learning to the new Washington State standards in both ELA and mathematics. So some of our next steps, as you know, that we are revamping our K-12 district assessment system to more closely align to the new Washington State standards. And we're also providing some training around something called the interim assessment blocks. These are assessments that are designed by Smarter Balance. These are completely optional to our schools this year. However, some of your very eager and enthusiastic principals have jumped on board and said, if these can give us information about how our students are performing towards the standard, we would love to be able to find that out and use that for formative assessment. Not necessarily for test prep, because that's not what it's about, but really to use this as formative assessment, to help teachers be informed about how their students are doing to adjust instruction. And the way the blocks were written, they're written in chunks to go with the standards that student teachers are teaching. So our middle schools, seeing those disparate scores, have jumped on board, and they are going to be administering the interim blocks to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and also high school in Algebra and Geometry. And we will be continuing our efforts to better align our instruction to the state standards, and our professional development will support that. Our elementary, middle school, as I just said, some of our elementaries are also going to be giving some of those blocks in English Language Arts to, again, provide teachers with more information about instruction. And then also to give our students, especially our third-grade students, another chance at practicing what that looks like. Again, this is all optional, this has all been chosen or decided by your school principals as they believe it will be important information for them. As we mentioned earlier, we've implemented the four waiver days to provide teachers time to develop appropriate interventions, to look at that data, that diagnostic data, and determine what are the next steps needed for students, and then monitor that. And then, as I said, continue our efforts around professional development that's truly designed for the new Washington State standards.
So I went on the website just to check, to see if we had indicated how many students had not taken the exam, and then I went back and reread the slide again. So the non-applicable. I apologize for not, that's your percentage that didn't have a score. So in math, 62% of the students didn't have a score.
Oh, jeez.
And in reading, excuse me, and English Language Arts, not just reading, English Language Arts, that was 48%. And that, now it triggered my mind, and once they started to ask the question, then we saw the math decline pretty dramatically.
So, and again, as Dr. Garcia mentioned, the appendix is there. Simply by clicking on the links, it will take you to the data that you can look at again on your own time. Any questions that we can entertain that we haven't already discussed? Thank you.
All right, thank you for the report. We'll move on to item number 14, Board Comments and Reports. Start with our student representative.
Stadium has begun a lot of food drives for the homeless and just shelters in our community, basically, so we're mainly focused on holiday food drives right now.
Good, thank you. Director Wenskill?
You know, I have lots to say about the convention last week that I went to, but it's so late, I'll talk about it later. But it was, I went to really good sessions and learned lots of valuable stuff. We talked a lot about testing, quite interesting, a lot of pushback on testing.
Director Oshka?
Just real quick, there was a community meeting held by Metro Parks at the Salishand Family Investment Center regarding the Eastside Community Center, with an intent of kind of giving an overview and getting some public feedback. I think probably about 60 people attended from multiple areas with lots of feedback, so that was good to see. And other than that, I don't have any updates on that, but I wanted to share that.
Vice President Bill?
Just a comment, this morning Senator Murray came to the Early Learning Center at Willard, and we hosted area superintendents from Thurston County to Auburn, and she talked about the new replacement for No Child Left Behind, we're not going to call it that, she wasn't sure exactly what we are going to call it yet, but very encouraging. It looks like it, conference committee report came out 39 to 1, and that was worked through with Senator Murray and Senator Alexander and Representative Scott, and from the Democratic side, and I can't remember who the Republican was from the House. And it pretty much includes what was in the Senate bill, no more waivers, thank you very much, recognition of early learning being an integral part of K-12 education. So that will help us, and she said that there will be flexibility, much more flexibility now at the states. There will be no AYP letters anymore from the federal government, but the states will have to adopt a standard of identifying schools that are not where they want them to be. And it will be an approach in correction of looking at how to do, go about doing this positively and not punitively. And that's why we need some of that flexibility that will allow schools to use state dollars and federal dollars to address areas within schools where they're having difficulties. Very positive news, it looks like it will be signed probably within a week or so, and she said the president has literally been at the table. She said, the last thing you want is to run a bill out, pass it, and have him not sign it or veto it. So the White House is on board, so it looks like a Christmas present to elementary and secondary education is coming in the form of a new, of new federal, new federal act with more flexibility and less punitive stuff coming down from the U.S. Department of Education. And it was kind of her to pick us to host this. I think she has kind of, kind of likes us, this is two or three times that we've done that, so that's all that I have.
And I'd just add on to that, it's been, I think, eight years it's been expired.
Almost 10.
So we've been waiting patiently for new legislation. So Senator Murray's leadership is much appreciated, it's a bipartisan bill. December 2nd is the targeted date that Congress is going to vote on it, so if you're so inclined, please reach out to your member of the House of Representatives and to the senators to urge their support to the passage of the bill. Move on to item number 15, and I'm-
I just want to-
Deputy Superintendent.
I want to thank all of our community partners that have been supporting our families and our school staffs. Stadium is one example. I got a wonderful email, Pierce County Juvenile Detention Center and the staff at Raymond Hall teamed up to make sure every day reporting student's family had a meal.
Awesome.
And that's just one example, and I'm never more inspired than to stop and look at the number of folks in Tacoma that come together to make sure that every one of our students and their family is taken care of. So on behalf of the entire district, thank you to all of our community partners for doing that. It makes a difficult time of year a little bit easier.
Thank you for sharing. Item number 15, announcement of future board meetings, December 10th, 6:00 PM here, and I would be remiss if I did not congratulate our colleague Catherine Oshka on her successful reelection to the board. Congratulations. We will have Andrea Cobb, who will be taking Director Miller's position. So we'll go through board reorganization and new board member oath of office that day. And then January 14th, we will have our first business meeting of the new year. Anything else for the good of the order with that?
Oh, wait a minute, we need to, I'd like to move to excuse student member Bernarte, because she has to attend a certain number of meetings to be, and she needs to be excused.
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments, hearing none, I'll listen carefully say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that she's been officially excused. With that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Look at that face, Mike. Roman's in a face plant in this game.